Conference will now be recorded.
I'd like to welcome everyone to the September 15th, 2025 Regular Council Meeting. Call to order at 6:30 PM. I'll rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are any additions or corrections to the agenda tonight? Okay, may I like to make a motion?
I'll move to accept the agenda as written.
So moves, is there a second?
Oh, second.
Second by Counsel Weller. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 None opposed. Okay, we'll move right into the Mayor's Report. Citizens of the Month. Counsel Wagner has the honor this month of September, so I'll turn it over to her.
Thank you. So, I like to fill the audience, so I... I moved here in 2006 and love, I mean, this is, I just knew this was the place I wanted to live. And then we had the flood. And I knew I could help because it was just in my DNA to say I could help. And I met Kim the day I showed up at City Hall. She had more energy, she was organized, and she was just willing to jump and do anything good. It was kind of, she's a force of nature, kinda like Betsy is. And while we were working at flood recovery, and I'm sorry I have to write this because there's so much, otherwise I go off topic. While working at flood recovery, which is now Bargains on Bridge, I became aware of the incredible number of cats in Vernonia. Many were hanging around the house right next door here on the corner where a resident had been displaced due to flooding and was trying to feed her cats and ended up feeding a lot more cats than she had originally had because they had no place to go. I remember Kim meeting with some of the residents in the hallway of the flood recovery center where we were over there. And then, information I found out, she started to help address the issue with partnership from another resident, Angela Bettencourt. This group has fairly silently and without fanfare continued to provide these services to assist our community with controlling the feral cat population, as well as helping residents with education and sterilization assistance for their pets as well. The importance of this organization is that unfixed cats can reproduce very quickly. Again, information, data is awesome. A cat can get pregnant at five months old, female cat, and they have an average of four litters a year and an average of four kittens per litter. That means a single cat with her offspring could reproduce over 1 million cats in 10 years if they all lived and were not fixed. And as evidenced by what has happened prior in Vernonia, it adds up. I mean, we've seen it firsthand. Another service being provided is fostering orphaned kittens and mama cats in their litters to feed them, socialize them so they can be adopted locally or through a partnership with Oregon Humane Society. This group has continued to grow and the dedicated volunteers now include Chelsea Howley, Carol Sen, Jen Venkura, Betsy Mello, Kelly Webb, Maggie Weaver, Kat and Brandon Clark, KJ Bemis, Jan Cockro, Lindella Mills, Jackie Sisk, John Howley, and Kim Tierney. I suspect there's others too. I know I've gotten a couple of phone calls over the years. Can you? I have these two cute kittens and I did... I'm allergic, just so you know, that's the only reason I have not volunteered, but I have brought up food and, you know, delivers and deliveries and such. There's others who's assisted with providing rides for kitties to and from bed appointments. Since 2007, Kim estimates Vernonia Cat Rescue in its iterations has helped get about 3,000 cats fixed. That is an incredible number, and I cannot imagine the number that that means that we do not have in this community running loose. In 2025 this year, I was very excited, and I know you all were too, that Vernonia Cat Rescue was formed as a nonprofit animal rescue. They will be able to continue their work through direct donations, which will be tax deductible. And I am honored to be able to present you, city and the council, the September 2025 Citizens of the Month. Now, moment of truth, Susan does not know how beloved you are, and I am embarrassed by that fact. So, I'm gonna give these to Kim and let her hand them all out. And then we're gonna make you all come up here, take the... And truly, thank you, thank you for everything.
We're not, we're missing enough.
I, that I can tell. Well, somebody's in Florida. I'm gonna let you hear. And they're, actually, they're all the same names on there, so I can just...
Come stand. Do want to acknowledge Chelsea Howley, who has stepped up and has taken over a lot of fostering, fostering leads, and she's got the bulk of the work, as I kind of hitched my way out of this, so.
You're like retired or something. She's trying to go at the retirement part of it, though.
And we have a board of directors, Betsy Mello, Jen Venkura, Chelsea.
We're gonna get in the picture again?
That was clouty.
Can we just catch you over this way, face and foot, so we can hear?
Right up. Stand aside, ladies, might be...
Yeah, I can see your shirt. Absolutely.
She's our feral kitten specialist.
Yeah, Audrey.
Okay, everybody ready? Hold up here. This way. Ready, one, two, three. Do one more, and one more. Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Should I read everybody's names off, Susan?
Sure.
Did you, oh, you like that?
Yeah.
Supposed to show why I need to be hired. Honestly, I truly appreciate all you do. And as we always announce, you do not have to stay for the rest of the meeting unless you really want to.
Thank you.
Now, I gotta ask, which one is first named cat with a C?
Cats, cats up here.
Oh, okay.
But that's great, isn't it?
Yeah. Yeah, I love it.
Thank you, everybody.
Nice seeing you, Chelsea.
Yes, you too.
Thank you, Susan.
Oh, you're welcome. My pleasure.
Okay, are there any presentations? Okay, Council Committee Meeting Reports.
Yeah, Public Works Committee met on the 19th of last month, or a little earlier for some reason, I can't remember when. I don't have a whole lot of notes written down about that meeting. There was one interesting point they brought up. I don't know if it was Sam or who it was, but they talk about in their public restrooms, they're using a blue light.
Our public restroom?
No. In other towns, they're using a blue light. Makes it impossible to find your veins to inject.
Interesting.
Yeah, so something we should maybe look at, transition if it's not a big deal. Let's say that's how some cities are dealing with that issue. I don't know, maybe Sergeant has any. Never heard of it? I'd never heard of it either, but several of the members knew about it.
Interesting, okay.
That's it. Okay, any other committee reports?
Wednesday, we're supposed to have one.
Okay. All right, moving right into topics on the floor. Looks like we have a couple. First one's Oliver Zeyadney Rodney Costello. So, come forward, Oliver, and you could just state your name. You don't have to state your address. I'm over. You all have three minutes to speak your piece.
First thing that I'd like to let everybody know is I'm not Mexican, not Puerto Rican, not Latino. I'm, my family comes from Zephyr, Pennsylvania. My great, great, great grandfather was the first American councilman for the United States. I mean, from Nicaragua, from the United States. So, I know that I'm not just some raggedy man. I have family. Some people think that I'm a piece of crap, but I'm not. They are a crap. To tell you the truth, I have a lot of complaints that I can't even state them right now. I just wanted you to know that I will stand by my house, defend it. I don't care who the hell comes there. They better have a good reason because if not, they're gonna be in trouble. And I'm already informed, I'm not gonna even go to the police department here because they're not worth a poof. So, if there's anything else that I can do, I'll try to write it out, let you know next meeting, because I just get really aggravated and frustrated that we have, that I have to go through this crap because of certain people and even the police department. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Oliver. We're glad you're part of the community and we're glad you're here sharing your thoughts tonight. Thank you. So, the second one is Brett Cosley. Random good stuff, that's good.
I wanted to come down, notice some good stuff over the summer, and people are quick to come down and complain, and that's their right. And as you guys know, I've been down here to complain, so I'm not negating anything about that. But I sat on council for about 10 years, and the school board for about five years, and the West Oregon Board for, I don't know, eight years now. It's not as common for somebody to come down and say good things, so I thought I would do that. Some of you know that I probably walk around the mill pond just about more than, there's very few people that walk around the mill pond than me. And we got a new dog in May that adopted us, and she's very insistent on walking around the mill pond. And so this summer, when I was out from school, I walked around the mill pond probably 10 times a day, including, not all at once. So, we'd walk around a couple of times and then go home, and then she'd tell me we'd have to walk around again. So anyway, that's a little rambling, but I just want to say, as I was walking around the mill pond this year, twice I noticed that the spigot at the back was leaking, and so I called down to the city. One time I talked to Stephanie, and one time I talked to Cassandra. And both of those times, by the time I got down there again, it was fixed. So, very, very quick. One time I went down and I noticed that there was some very offensive graffiti on one of the stones that was right by the path over on the west side, where there's two stones right beside it, one down in the little trough. And I called, I came down and I talked to Eva to show her the picture. And I'm not sure exactly how quickly that was taken care of, but it was definitely within a day or two. And they did a really good job, used like a gray paint that really blended in well. So that was nice. This is not really new, but David and Richard just have created a really nice welcoming gathering space down there. Appreciate that. And then Tim, Tim does a fabulous job keeping care of the parks. And for me, it's really just the mill pond and then the webway is what I primarily use, so that's what I see. And Tim does a fabulous job, the cutting that he just recently did to open up some of the lake and fishing areas, that was incredible. And then finally, not last but not least, is your own counselor, fellow counselor, Mr. Webb. And until our weatherman gets more rain in, he's not down there as much as he used to be, but I would see him down there just about every day maintaining and checking on the pumps. So I just wanted to compliment some of the good things going on in the city. I'm sure there's other good things going on, but those are the ones I saw over this summer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I was having some positivity in our world, see what's taking place in the last week. It's nice to have that in our own communities, so. Good thing. Consent agenda for acceptance, Public Works Committee Meeting Minutes for July 2025. Parks Committee Meeting Minutes for June 2025.
I move to approve the consent agenda for acceptance.
So moved. Is there a second? Second, seconded by Counsel Norman. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 None opposed. Consent agenda for...
I haven't even listed.
Oh. Is there a third one?
Oh, you...
Oh, I'm sorry.
All right, the name is just the roster to sign in for the meeting attendance? If you'd let, the little slip is where you have to fill out to speak?
I think you could come. Come forward, Ray.
Old age is getting to me. Ray Brown, lives on 842 First Avenue. My concern is more directed towards law enforcement. I know I saw it in the paper that we had a little over 251 reports this last month. Those are ones, I imagine there's quite a bit more not reported. My concerns lie in a couple of things. Number one, once again, the drug traffic that's going on in our community. We showed a video to one of the officers of an actual drug deal that took place right in front of my house about 4 o'clock in the morning. It's been going on on a regular basis, although we don't have any patrols at night, so there's no way of knowing it. The concern of the 251 reports, though, makes me wonder what is actually being done as a deterrent. Now, I don't know what all those calls were about, some of them could be just piddly things, but I do know that for a fact, we've had a couple of neighborhood meetings and stuff, that people just plain don't call. They'll try and take care of the problems themselves because by the time anybody gets there, it's usually resolved or it's passed off and there's no evidence, nothing going on. So, I wonder if there's a way we can put together a proactive scenario where we get regular patrols on all the streets of Vernonia. Vernonia's not that big. And I know from my past experience in law enforcement that one of the best deterrents for crime in a city is presence. If you have a person, a patrolman, present on a regular basis, not necessarily set up routine, really go here, 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 every single night at a certain time, random patrols, foot patrols in the city at night or during the day, when there's a high popularity on the weekends, where you got a lot of people in town, it wouldn't hurt one bit to have a patrol where the officers will just get out of their vehicle, walk up and down the street, greet people, talk, and make their presence known. That in itself will deter a lot of what I consider unruly behavior. That's one thing. Now, on a personal thing, around April of this year, a person in our neighborhood accused my wife and I of stealing their cat and getting rid of it. And they had a video of it. And they showed the video to the police department, and they determined that there was no cat, there was no cage, there was nothing. And I had asked Rodney Carnahan to walk across the street and explain that to these people because all it was gonna do is escalate if they didn't. Well, it escalated. He didn't want to go over there and talk to them, he made no contact with them. As a result, I got my windshield in my motorhome broken, windshield in my Honda broken, I got my tires slashed, had sand put in my gas tank because I completely, because they think I stole their dang cat, which we didn't. I'm not a cat fan. So, now I have to go to court and sue these people. And Rodney Carnahan told me he needed to file a police report, so I did, back in May. Here it is September, and I still don't have a case number, I still don't have a copy of the report, I still don't have the initial complaint that she made to the police department. And I'm getting close to the point where I have to do something with the courts. So, how do we light a fire under the police department's bottom so we can get some paperwork done? And they've come up with several excuses, but it doesn't take any time at all to create a case number. Once I get a case number, then I can use that in my civil court with a claim. But just to go in with a claim and not showing that I have reported it to the police and that there is some justification behind my claim, I'm wasting my time. So, that's my concern, is we need more patrols in the area, we need more presence, and I need my darn police report. I'm tired of waiting. Now, I can go to the State Police Board and file a complaint, but I don't want to do that. All I want is a simple copy of the report with the darn case number so I can add it to my claim. Now, one last thing I want to mention. There are people driving around this town without insurance and without licenses. The police department here knows who these people are, and they know they're driving around. Now, from what I've seen, these people get stopped, they're allowed to take their car back home, and the very next day, they're in their car driving again. And I can assure you from past experience, one of these days, these people are gonna get in an accident, and somebody's gonna get hurt. And guess who's gonna be culpable on all that? The City of Vernonia's Police Department, because they knew these people were driving around without licenses and insurance. And that can be very bad for the city. These vehicles need to be impounded, these people need to be stopped, because I don't want to be the one that gets hit. I mean, I've already had my cars trashed before with people without insurance, and I don't think it's a very nice thing to have happen. So, that's all I can really say, but that is my biggest concern, is the safety of the people. We have a lot of people moving into this town from the City of Portland, from Vancouver, from all around the state. They love the town, but they hate the police department because nobody does anything. And you don't hear about it because they don't come to the meetings, but I hear about it, neighborhood gatherings and things like that, complaints. Now, why don't we ever see a police out there? Why do I have to worry about my gas being stolen? Why do I have to worry about people letting the air out of my tires at night? You know, I mean, it's not just me, it's other people. But again, they call, they call into the 800 number and nobody ever comes. So, that's, we need a local number. And I don't want to inundate the police department with a bunch of frivolous stuff, but when it comes to something important, you know, middle of the night, I got guys coming up and down my street with bicycles, with gas cans and hoses over their shoulder. Now, I know they're not going to the local gas station. So, it's a...
Ray?
Yeah.
Sorry, just, I don't mean to be disrespectful, but you exceeded your time.
Oh, okay, that's fine, that's fine.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you, ma'am.
Ray, here's... I forgot. Dust control in Louisiana. I forgot because it wasn't cars, and the dust control in Louisiana was fantastic. Thank you.
As well as Wheat Avenue.
Yeah. I think we'll get to that in a city administrative report. Okay.
I don't think we voted on that, right?
We did. A motion carried on consent agenda for acceptance.
I missed that.
Wagner, Norman.
Moving on to consent agenda for approval, City Council Meeting Minutes for August 18th, 2025.
I move to approve the consent agenda for approval.
So moved, is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Counsel Weller. Thank you. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, none opposed. Any unfinished business tonight? None. New business, staff report, city administrator report frequency. I'll start this discussion off. I, it was presented, well, maybe two months ago, maybe? And I thought quite a bit about it, and actually, I thought that my own opinion on that is maybe one, one meeting a month would be adequate to get a report from the city administrator. I don't know how other council feels or how this city administrator feels about that, but I think once a month would be enough to communicate to the council. Just my opinion. I'd like to ask the city administrator, what do you think about the idea? Is it necessary, or?
So, like I had mentioned to council before, it started with the city administrator, Mr. Mammon, Gianpaulo Mammon. And he did the city administrator's report, but as staff, because I was his staff at the time, we all contributed items that he collected into one report and presented that to the council. Now, our departments have their own reports they present to you. Police has a report, the Public Works has a quarterly report, Finance does their own report. So I think once a month suffices. I would say if we're gonna do that, we would do it the second meeting of the month, so it kind of gives a snapshot of what happened in the month. Weirdly, Stephanie came into my office today and she said, "Oh my gosh, my listserv is going crazy with city administrator reports." Like, because the listserv is all the city recorders talking about what they're all talking about, and the majority of them do it once a month, the second meeting of the month. And so she's like, "Give, I won't be there, but give council the tidbit that we're not the only ones talking about it." So that would be our two cents.
Yeah, my next question was, when would you like to?
I think at the end of the month, so like, that, you know, the second meeting, so I could tell you all the stuff that has happened so far in the month.
Yeah.
Go ahead, yeah. Yeah, I agree, once a month, and second's fine with me. The only caveat would be is if something on the list has a major change to it.
Yeah.
You know, bring that forward during that meeting, just add item.
Yeah, no surprise.
Update current on it would be the only thing.
I would think maybe the first meeting in the month, so then you can do a monthly report of the prior month rather than the second meeting, because we're only halfway through.
Oh, sure, whatever.
I mean, that would make more sense.
If you want it after the fact for the previous month, I'm happy to do that, too.
That would just be my thought.
Sure. Sure.
Either way.
So we should look to expect it at the beginning of the month then? Is that okay, Jezza?
Yeah.
So would anyone like to make a motion to direct the city administrator to present her report to the Vernonia City Council at the first meeting of every month from now on?
I would like to make that motion, just clarifying, is it in our council rules as well or in your?
It's in the council rules. I don't know if it has a timeline. If it does, Stephanie, I'll have to bring the council rules to you guys to amend it and maybe make it more vague so council could play with that expectation as they wish instead of having to keep changing their rules, but I'll have her check.
So moved.
So motion's been made. Any second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Counselor Webb. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Hey, also looking at a staff report work session schedule for the Springboard Road discussion.
Yeah, the Springboard residents wanted to sit down with us and I had shared with you guys the report I kind of sent to them with the different ownerships, that we could sit at a meeting, kind of get everyone on the same page with who owns what, what it would take for certain roads to come into their city ownership, what responsibilities there are, and they wanted to do a work session where they could be present or at minimum be invited to be present, not as formal as a council meeting, so they could have the, a little back and forth. So Stephanie had marked dates which you said you were out or there are current meetings in this room where staff is not available. So are there any other dates that?
I am gone through at least 12th of October and potentially another week or week and a half.
From now till then?
Friday, yeah.
So you won't be October 1st?
I will not be here.
Oh, okay.
So then I guess we're looking at the second, the 20th and the week of the 20th and the 27th?
Unless you want to have it without me because I don't want to be the sole holdup on this.
Well, and it's a work session, so no decisions will be made and I can fill you in if that's comfortable for you, too. So.
And it'll be recorded?
Yeah.
Oh, so I can just listen?
Yeah.
I'd be available October, Wednesday, October 1st. I don't know about anyone else.
Good for me.
That'd be good for me.
Can we, how about the 30th of September?
Tuesday?
Yeah.
That'll work for me. Tuesday?
Yep.
Tuesday, the 30th at 6:30? And I'll invite.
6:30.
I'll invite the neighbors.
Okay, business from the departments.
Okay, so in front of you, you got August calls for service, which are five. Do you guys have any questions? I need one. Okay. Officer Schultz and Eva participated in national night out up at the school providing vehicles for the kids to go through and explore. Eva did face painting and answers ques, and answered questions about the police department. And then the Tahoe's have been decommissioned and are ready for surplus.
Okay, any other questions? Sergeant? Okay, thank you.
One traffic stop.
I gave you the jamboree stat last one, so.
Oh, yeah.
They would be in this one, but.
No ordinances or resolutions? Any correspondence? Okay. City administrator report.
Okay. So same with DQ. When I got back from my absence, I sent another email saying, where are we at? The water table's back and we test up there. I'm waiting for them to answer me. As you know, Brown was back for a week and now they're back and forth for, for this week and they plan to be back in Vernonia next week. I don't know what is going on with the bouncing back and forth. I think it's just timing and night paving availability over there and striping and so it's just kind of been a weird thing, but they plan to be back here the 22nd through the 26th. And hopefully City Hall be finished, the front of City Hall will be accessible for, for disabled citizens because that's really the only door they can come in because of the back out stairs. So we're hoping to get that done when they get back here. Lake bathroom roof, so the, that project's complete, spruce up northwest came and reattached the metal roofing panels and then Next Level came and installed the new flagpole light with a sensor on it so we don't, we're trying to, every time we replace something, create ease and less staff time. In the olden days, it was a switch and now it's on a light sensor so the flag will be illuminated when it turns dark automatically. And then they reconnected all of the electrical that had been disconnected due to the repairs. So some of the lake lights were off and those are now on. We do still have one lake light that we thought the bulb was a problem, but it ends up being the ballast inside the lighthouse. And so Next Level will have to come out and fix that. Dust control, Bretton Hauer oil came and completed the application of the magnesium lignosulfate on Louisiana Avenue from Mellinger to B Street and on Weed Avenue from the jog to the edge of city ownership. We received a lot of calls from the residents that were very appreciative that the city put down that material, so. The poplars at the Vernonia Memorial Cemetery, I don't know if anyone had ever noticed those, they were down in the bottom of the oldest section. They had kind of lived their life. They were dropping an immense amount of debris every fall and most of the year, and they were kind of shading out the grass. The grass is getting harder and harder to keep down there. So Tim and Mitch went down there and Tim fell them and then cut the butts so you can't really tell they were even there. And it just looks wooded the same way the other edges of the cemetery look, so that was a very good job by them. And then your upcoming meetings are, well, salmon festival, of course, Saturday, October 4th, if you're here, and then city council, the 6th and the 13th, and I'll be adding the 30th on. Do you guys have any other questions for me?
I did drive up to the cemetery and they did a good job. Looks nice, Jezza. So, good job.
We will be, and I guess I didn't notice by the end of day, my mind wasn't on it, but the baskets are coming down and then the fall flags will go up and then we'll be returning the plastic to the greenhouse so they'll make ours for next year.
And thank Mitch for all the work he did on the roof at the.
Yeah.
Restrooms. It really looks nice down there now.
He also got the, the two doors redone on the Spencer bathroom, which had been kind of been looking, so if you drive by there, they're all freshly painted and look good again, so. Our goal is if you keep it nice, then people will treat, treat it well. That's the, that's the same thing with graffiti. Anytime Tim sees it, he has every color in his truck and he covers it because we are deterring the kids, saying, go down and look at my art, because when their friends come down, there's no art to be seen. That's the goal, so.
Okay, any other questions or discussions? Okay, thank you, Jezza. Any items from counselors or mayor?
Well, I'll be.
Good.
I'm going to be out. We're another road trip and we're not sure when we get to Glacier, if we're going north, east or west, so.
So you'll be gone?
I'm, we're leaving Friday and we'll be gone through, definitely through the, yeah, definitely through the 12th.
Okay.
And again, if we come straight home from Glacier, we'll be home on the 12th, otherwise, I don't know.
That's fun.
It's kind of fun, it's kind of weird.
Right.
Make sure you take your tire change with you.
Yes, no, they're already in the car. Weatherman gave you a panic.
Right on your fur.
Oh, yeah, no, no, we had that Yellowstone in the beginning in May. We, we were snowed on for two days, so it was kind of fun. But thank you, yes.
All right, anybody else? Okay. Action item summary.
Okay, so I'm, I'm going to start reporting the first meeting of the month, have Stephanie check if the council rules need amending, and then invite the neighbors to the Tuesday, September 30th work session to discuss the Springboard Road projects. Anything else?
Was that six or 6:30?
6:30.
Six thirty. Okay, thank you for all attending and I will adjourn this meeting at 7:11 PM. Meeting adjourned.
Good job. That was quick.
I'm going to go back to me. Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to come.
Respect their bases.
Yeah.
Fine.